Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, June 19th, 2023 Board of Commissioners First item of business this evening is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. As always, we would invite, we don't have anyone signed up, if someone from the audience would like to deliver an invocation and lead us in a pledge of allegiance, we'll invite anyone in the audience to come up to do so. Seeing no one jump at that opportunity, I will ask my flag's chair, Commissioner Jarvis, to handle that.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this opportunity to gather to do the business of Currituck County. We are so thankful and so blessed to have such a beautiful place to call home. We ask that you be with each one of us tonight. Give us your wisdom, help us do your will, and be with everyone as they safely return home this evening. In your name we pray, amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Selena. Next up, we have our Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest Reminder, county attorney.
Okay, I need to get it up first.
Okay.
I apologize. It's in the packet.
It's page three of the packet.
All right, pursuant to GS 153A-44, Commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the Board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the Commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or matters in which the Commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every Commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflict. Do any Commissioners have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance. Anything to report this evening? All right, thank you all. Give me a pass, Megan. You know, I get tired of having to do that all the time, so. All right, next up is the approval of the agenda. Any changes this evening? Can I have a motion for approval, please?
Second.
All right, there we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up is public comment. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this evening that came in late that did not sign up for public comment? Mr. Harvey?
There was like four sheets out there. Well, my name is Harvey Roberts. I live in 489 North Indian Town Road, Shawboro. There were four papers, one of the papers was about, you know, you could speak on, well, well, in three minutes, you can't speak on anything on the agenda, right?
You got, you got budget, you signed up to speak on that subject?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak on something other than that subject, you're all gonna bring up the thing about Hogbridge Ditch, but right now, what I want to speak on is probably back in 2000, 2005, the Currituck County Commissioners asked the Soil and Water Conservation Service, Mike Doxy, to identify all the major canals in Currituck County and give them a name. And we did that. There's eight major canals in Moyoc, and there's only one major canal in Crawford Township, that's the Hogbridge Ditch. We identified them, they named them. We asked for a 50-foot setback. There's been a 50-foot setback on that canal, I don't know if it was September, yeah, it must've been September of last year. And according to the letter, I understand, from Eric Weatherly, based on developer complaints and maybe homeowner's complaint, they want to reduce that setback to 25 feet. And the Soil and Water Board, the farmers, 25 feet is not enough. You gotta have the 50 feet. And I have some landowners here tonight that are on Hogbridge Canal, and they can speak to their fact. We need 50 feet. We dig the canal out approximately every 30 years. It was dug out in the 60s, it was dug out like 90, 91. It's soon gonna be digging again. And if homeowners in these 10-acre subdivisions are allowed to put trees, fences, buildings within 25 feet, there won't be enough room to spread the dirt on the land. They'll have to haul it off their property or haul it on back of the fence. So that's my statement on that. Then we have maybe some other people who say they're in favor of a 50-foot setback. Oh, yeah, and a few, a few months ago, last summer, we met with, what's the name? What's your name?
Mike Payment.
Mike Payment. I have metal blocks. Mike Payment, you met with John Duncan, John Wayne Duncan, Pete Smithson, Joe Etheridge, and myself, and we talked to you about that, needed that 50-foot setback. Nothing has happened since then. So I'll have some other landowners to tell you that we need the 50-foot setback on the eight canals in Moyoc and the one in Crawford.
Did y'all speak to that?
I think that was absolutely board.
All right.
Didn't we have the works this last time?
I don't remember. We talked, we talked about it. I think we talked about it, but we didn't take any action on it specifically. We, I believe, if I remember, sir, about two years ago, we set it to 25 feet because it was, the equipment's only about eight, six, eight feet wide, and that was, some of the rationale was not taking up more people's yards than we had to.
Well, Chairman, if I remember correctly, part of the challenge was, or part of the objection to the complaint was under, in the event that, because there were major subdivisions that were going in, and so the thought was, you know, what happens if the HOA fails and the subdivision goes under and there's no money to maintain the ditches? And I think at the time, the Board looked at that and went, okay, the, the odds of this subdivision failing and creating this problem and, you know, needing that full 50 feet, that that was not necessarily gonna be a risk, per se. I mean, and I'll use Fost and Flores, two examples of significant, you know, type subdivisions going in. Now, I don't know the specifics of, of what we're talking about, but that was part of the, the rationale that was used at the time.
Right, right. It seemed like we had septic fields that may have needed to go into those.
That's correct.
It was impeding, some of the smaller lots had.
It was septic fields, and it was also repair, septic repair, repair areas that.
Basically had a yard left.
Correct.
Yep, okay, I'm sorry. I know we talked about it, I just wanted to reiterate, did you have something?
Owen did.
I was just gonna say, the 50-foot would not impede on septic fields, because what Harvey is talking about, and I agree 100%, you've got to be able to get in there and get that dirt moved off that ditch bank. And if you only got 25 feet, you've got to load it on dump trucks and haul it out instead of just spreading it back on the land.
And I would like to just add one thing. When this issue was before us, I always say that we only make as good as decisions as what information we have. There was seemingly no opposition at the time we considered this setback. And I would, I always respect the opinion of farmers, because my favorite farmer was my father. So after talking with Owen and Harvey at length about this issue, I definitely think we should revisit it. I don't know what it would take to do that, but a 50-foot setback now seems very advantageous to the maintenance of that ditch system, especially, I know Harvey and several of the farmers, along with Kitty and I, went and looked at several of the ditches, and I, and I can understand that. But none of that information was presented to us when we were considering this, not one bit of it.
And me as a Soil and Water District Supervisor and as a Hogbridge Ditch Commissioner, I personally was notified of that. Wasn't notified.
All right.
It was coming up every month.
All right, well, instead of getting into a big debate.
Okay, well, just real quick, one of the things we did, Harvey, after that meeting is, we asked that she be put on a mailing, a part of an email, I know we talked about that, to be included, to make sure an email went through to, forgot what her name was at the time, but that way you'd be aware of any meetings coming up with drainage.
I asked you and some other Commissioners, farmers don't look at the agenda every month. But the only thing you gotta do is you notify the Currituck County Farm Bureau. Or you notify the Currituck Agitation, he has everybody's phone number and email, and those two organizations can get the word out to every farmer and every landowner.
And, yeah, and I think that's what we addressed last time, so.
That's fair, that's absolutely fair.
Yeah, that was addressed, and that, that email was put on there to be, to be sent out included, so that you wouldn't miss that, so.
So without, without, pardon me, we got a long meeting up, so the question is, for the Board, do we want to have more discussion about this language?
I think everybody supports the 50-foot.
Okay, well, let me just, let me just say something real quick, because, yes, Harvey, I did meet with you, and I told you I would ask the Board, and I did poll the Board back then if they wanted to have a discussion on this, and at that time, there was no interest, but I guess there's interest now. But I did ask the Board, just so you know.
Yes, you did. So, all right, so.
One other thing, like somebody mentioned septic tank, in my mind's a blank of names. What was the former Health Department man here in Currituck?
Joe Hobbs?
Joe Hobbs. If you look at the North Carolina Regulations on septic tanks, there can't be any septic tank line within 100 feet of a drainage, canal, river, anything, it's 100 foot. So y'all reducing it back to only 25 feet, that's in violation if somebody puts their septic tank line within 100 feet of anybody or water. I got that from Joe Hobbs, he sent me the paperwork on that.
All right. All right, so we'll get the staff to bring us some, something to work on that.
So do you need to hear from me?
Not really, no.
Okay.
If, if that's what you want, that's what we're gonna do.
Yes.
What he said.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm just a landowner that.
And who are you?
I'm Jane Ventress. My family, my siblings, I live at 162 Brumley Road, Not Silent, and my family, my siblings and I inherited a farm, the Red House Farm, which is pertaining, yes, the, yes. Okay, so I'd definitely support what Harvey just got up here and said.
You live in your mother's house.
Yeah, I, I, I have two houses, and I don't know if that makes a difference, but I go back and forth unlike a gypsy, from Not Silent to Shawboro, so.
All right, thank you.
This ditch has been in my life for 71 years and been in our family.
Hang on, hang on, you had to tell us who you are and where you live.
Okay, Joanne Mansfield. I live at 114 Maple Knoll Road. My father and my uncle inherited this land from my grandmother, who inherited it from her, her father, Tom Roberts. So from the late 1800s through 1900s, up until now, that ditch has been a part of our, a major part of our life, because to get to the land, you have to go over this ditch. So I can only say Harvey knows this land better than anybody, because it's also been a part of his life, not quite as long as mine, but we need, I trust him, and I hope that y'all will trust him too, that it is a big important part to Shawboro, maybe even more than Shawboro. I don't know how far it goes. I just know the part that affected the Red House Track, which is 138 acres that drains in this ditch. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Lifelong Currituck.
All right. All right, anyone else this evening? All right, seeing no one else, I'll close public comments, move on to Commissioner Reports. I'll be brief tonight before we jump into that. Prior to us opening this meeting, the Board has had several meetings on lot sizes, we try and grapple with development in the county, so we have now decided on a course of action and hand that off to our planning staff, so they will be bringing something forward to us soon to hopefully curb some development within the county for the time being and slow things down a little bit, let us catch our breath. We also had a work session on quasi-judicial proceedings. We have one of those this evening, where the Board sits very similar to a judge panel. And it was a refresher course, not only for the Board of Commissioners, but helped us discuss some things with staff that maybe didn't make sense and can be very confusing to the public. So we're gonna put together an informational packet, if you will, maybe a video, to help better explain how quasi-judicial proceedings work and how they can, how they affect the public and how you can become involved in those proceedings. And so we'll have that coming out in the coming weeks, and if you're a resident that may be affected by something coming in a neighborhood, is typically what we see quasi-judicial, but it can be for a business or a sandmine, for instance. If you're notified, part of that information that you're gonna get in that notification is what can you do or not do, and how does it affect you? So, and it's in an effort to help better educate the residents of the county as we have these things move through and hit the Board of Commissioners. We normally have a meeting every other Monday. Our, our next meeting would be the 3rd of July. It has been decided to cancel that meeting due to the 4th of July holiday, a lot of people are out of town, and so we won't be having that meeting, so we will only have one meeting in July and the latter part of July. Other than that, that's all I have this evening. Commissioner Jarvis, you have anything for us?
Just a few things. First of all, I want to congratulate the 48 graduates of Napoli College, the 226 graduates from Currituck County High School, and the 239 COA graduates. But most importantly, I want to congratulate our Currituck students that graduated from both. It is quite a undertaking to do both courses of study and to do it well, but these students have a great start on their future as they have their associate's degree. Some of them will go into a trade, some with classes like Commissioner Payment taught, and some of those will head to our four-year universities and have a great start on finishing that bachelor's degree in a shorter amount of time, as well as a lower cost, because they were able to do and pursue that associate's degree while a student, while, as a student here in Currituck County. So my hat goes off to all the graduates, and congratulations to those people and those students that have a good start on their future. I also want to thank again our staff for the budget and the work they did, the updated budget. One of the highlights that I really appreciate and have think, our county manager, Ike McCree, is the revisions page, which made it very easy for someone who's gone through the budget page by page, to go and see the exact changes that have been made. It saved me from having to go through every single page and find those, and I really appreciate that, so my hat's off to the staff for that. And finally, to our Currituck County High School graduate and a student of mine, I want to thank our county attorney, Megan Morgan, for her presentation tonight. I taught Megan Morgan in a class when she was Megan Brothers at the high school called Law and Justice, and she made me so very proud tonight of how things come full circle. So thank you for your presentation, it was incredible. That's all I have.
All right, Ms. Kitty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this time is to inform the public about our advisory board meetings and other information that's pertinent to our county, but I have to brag about a Currituck County girl too. Our Assistant Clerk to the Currituck Superior Court, Debbie Bassnight, I'm sure is all smiles today. Her daughter, a Currituck County graduate class of 2009, Ashley Bassnight, is appearing on HGTV on The Battle of the Beach airing on Sunday night. It's a six-week contest between three couples who redecorate a beach cottage to see which one's the best. She and her friend Steve Lewis are working with design expert Ty Pendleton, and they have won three, of the three challenges, they have won two of them. And so it's really exciting to watch somebody that you know on TV, and it's more exciting to know that her mother works here in Currituck County. So congratulations to the Bassnight family, making Currituck great again.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just want to, just one thing, I just want to keep reiterating for a while. I know the county is always, citizens have always been asking, you know, about medical facilities and places they can go for medical needs, sick calls, whatever, and a few years back, just to recap again, the county revamped the Health Department with the assistance of Almond Regional Health and Director over there, you know, some discussions, we were able to provide, oh, shoot, nurse practitioners and some other needs, so that, the Health Department, don't think of it as the old Health Department of the past, it's actually, it can be a primary care provider for you out there, you can go for sick calls, and again, they accept any insurance that you have, and they're also on a tier system for payment, so if, for individuals that may have, need some help with the financial side of it there, there's some assistance with that. They can do prescriptions, physicals, again, it can be a primary care. We have it in the county, we're the first one in the area to do something like that. So for people watching, please keep that in mind, it's right, you know, over there by the judicial courts over there, easy to get to, you don't need to make an appointment, you can walk in, but that's another resource we have for our citizens, please use it, it's there, they'll welcome you in, and again, all, all insurances are accepted. If you need x-rays, they don't have an x-ray machine, but they can write a prescription to have that done, so just please keep that in mind, we have that available for not just our county employees, but all the citizens in Currituck County can take advantage of that. And other than that, you know, I know we're coming up on a holiday here soon, so, you know, I know we're not gonna be here, so I wish everybody a happy 4th of July, enjoy and celebrate, you know, why we celebrate that, and, you know, just be careful out there, the road's just busy, traffic's getting bad, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Nothing in this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Kevin, what's on your mind this evening?
I got a few. Like, as Commissioner Jarvis said, congrats to the high school grads, I work graduation when you're part of the administration at the Sheriff's Office, you get to work graduation every year, you're voluntold, but it's all good. It's, there was a lot of kids, my nephew was one of the ones that graduated with his high school diploma, as well as his COA two-year degree. Like I said, we live in a great place, it just shows day in, day out, through the schools, through the Health Department, as Commissioner Payment said. I use the Wellness Center for the county, it saves the county money, it saves the county employee money, it, and it's a good service. The nurse practitioner there is awesome, I've used it three or four times, you can get, you know, as far as us, blood work, the, the different things. It's a great program, and it's one, one of the few in this area, probably east of Greenville. Just to reiterate on how great a place that we do live in, Saturday afternoon, about lunchtime, the Sheriff's Office, with the help of dispatch, fire EMS, emergency management, I'm gonna forget somebody by saying it, and if I do forget somebody, I apologize, but they located the missing female that was missing for almost six days, she was about four days shy from, four hours shy of six full days in the woods. Located her, she's healthy, she's fine, those guys were working, the other night when it stormed, I guess it was Friday night, when it just came up and it was so nasty, they were called out in that, didn't quit. Positive results, she was located and found, got the help she needed, and it wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for our Sheriff's Office, the dispatch, fire EMS, emergency management, everybody involved, citizens calling in, different farmers, Jerry Old owned some of the property they own, we were getting pictures of trail camera, so we knew the person was still there, and our guys never quit, and gals. So like I stated before, we live in a great place, and, you know, it's just, it shows every day. Negative, traffic, it's getting busy, so be careful when you're out there on the roads, because people that are driving to the beach from, and not knocking their state, Pennsylvania, Jersey, wherever, they don't care, they just want to get through here as quick as they can to get to the beach. I think I was telling them last Saturday, the day shift wrote 90 tickets on a Saturday. So that'll just, I mean, you know, we probably didn't get everybody that was speeding, but we got 90 of them, so that's pretty impressive. But like I said, it's, you know, just be careful out on the roads, support the fire departments, when you see the red lights, the blue lights, the yellow lights for the tow truck moving them, you know, move over, that's somebody's family member out there working. But, like I said, we live in an awesome place, nothing's perfect, but we have great county staff that just give you 2,000% every day, and I appreciate everybody that, that does that, so I think that is it for me.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Owen?
Yeah, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I attended the high school graduation, and what impressed, one of the things that impressed me, as Commissioner Jarvis stated, those that got a dual degree, but of the 240 graduates, 91 of them were honor students, and I think that was pretty impressive, and everybody was well behaved, and they had a good time, and a lot of happy parents after the fact that night. I had a private citizen call me yesterday and talk to me about the Sheriff's Department's efforts on locating the lady, and he said, I really gained a new appreciation for our law enforcement and EMS people that just stuck to it and eventually found her, and luckily, the result was good.
Don't forget dispatch, Owen, or you'll be on the sofa at the house.
And dispatch, so, but, you know, we do live in a good place. And lastly, this is the 21st county budget I've worked on, and I've got to say, the staff did a tremendous job, it's probably the easiest to understand, and didn't need a Philadelphia lawyer or an accountant to discern it for us, and I just want to thank the county manager and his staff for what they did in putting this budget forward, and I really liked the format. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. One other thing, it's a little different this evening, we are going into a closed session after the regular business. Depending on what happens in that closed session, we will be coming back out and having more discussion and continuing our regular meetings, so we will be televising anything that happens after closed session, just, just, as a reference point, so if you're watching tonight, we go into closed session, hang out, we may be back on, on the TV again. So with that, I'll turn it over to the county manager for his report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things, I've asked the public's patience, we, we found out this morning that over with our Wellhead facility at Historic Corolla Park, that a wedding event, the erection of a tent punctured two of our geothermal lines, and so our air conditioning system is out of action in the Wellhead Club building, so we hope to have that back up and operational as soon as possible. You know something about that?
Oh, no, I just said, I just said I do.
Yes. Well, they know where the lines are now.
Yes. Secondly, the Moyoc Convenience Center, waste management truck backed into the power pole at the, at the site. Dominion Energy today said that the tap, that the pole was damaged such that the electricity has to be turned off at the site. It is our pole, we've had an electrician, I think was out there today, we're trying to quickly get that repaired and get electricity back to serving the compactor. Until then, again, public, please be patient with us, you'll just be having to use non-electrified containers, and we should dispose of, of solid waste. The Maritime Museum continues, Commissioner Beaumont, to my surprise, yes, to get good numbers on Saturdays and Sundays. June 10th, Saturday, June 10th, 465 folks visited the museum, and on June 11th, Sunday, 327. This past Saturday, 479 visited the Maritime Museum, yesterday, 359 visited. So the eight weekend days that the Maritime Museum has been open has seen 3,648 visitors with an average of 456 persons per day. So again, I want to thank.
A lot of people hanging out at the park.
Commissioner Beaumont's been out there with a detour sign, trying to get them to come through.
I want to thank our county staff also.
Whirling boat, and I have a little Popeyes outfit.
I want to also thank our county staff, I mentioned last meeting, who stepped up and are willing to work on Saturdays and Sundays to, to staff at least the Maritime Museum, and we like to get, you know, the Wellhead Club open too, but right now, we're able to maintain the Maritime Museum. The next, I wanted to show to the Board and to the public the elevations of the proposed Tolls Creek Elementary School. We should be getting the 70% estimate sometime in July. So here's the school, the main entry, this again is on Tolls Creek Road, north of the Moyoc Library. This again is on Tolls Creek Road, north of the Moyoc Library. Continuing on to the carpool canopy along the front of the, of the building. This building will be a, a building that will, that when it opens, will have capacity for 800 students, but it will be built with core facilities, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, those types of facilities, in order to be expanded eventually to 920 students. It is a two-story structure. This is the north facade out again toward the front. The exterior area outside the library. The west facade. Outdoor learning commons area. The south or the rear side of the, of the facility. Bus canopy. A STEM outdoor learning commons area. East facade of the, of the facility. You notice there, there are two buildings in essence that are connected by a covered And then just some additional elevation shots of what the facility is anticipated to look.
Where are they going to get those trees?
All right.
Well, this may be on the date that the, that the borrowing, the debt is paid.
Right.
So it's going to be, appears to be a very, very attractive facility, and it should serve the community's needs for many years to come. Let's see, focus on Currituck will be coming out, the county newsletter here pretty soon. I want to note that two things that will be in the focus is a article encouraging participation and joining to volunteer fire services in the county. And also, as Commissioner Payment just noted, we also have an article in there that will be speaking to the health department facility here in the county that can be accessed by folks for their primary medical care. So those two items will be in the upcoming focus. Look out for that. And also, see that Erica Hill, our new county librarian, is in the audience. So Eric, I might ask you if you would please stand up and just kind of let folks see who you are.
Hello.
Erica comes to us from Alamance County, and we're, we're very pleased to have her. I met with her recently and talked about some of the things and ideas that she has for the library system. And I think she's going to continue to keep us on the cutting edge of library science and services.
All right.
Libraries are still relevant today. So, thank you, Eric. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, that was rather comprehensive for a man of few words like yourself. That was something. All right. Ms. Morgan, what do you got this evening for us?
I actually do have one thing to report.
All right.
So this past Thursday, June 15th, we closed on the real property located at 129 Maple Road. Again, that is property that has been identified as a buffer for the airport. So that is officially closed. That's it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up this evening is a public hearing. Item number one, public hearing and possible adoption of the Currituck County annual budget for the fiscal year '23 and '24. And with that, we'll have Ike back in the hot seat again for a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, we'll go briefly through the presentation that was given to you at the budget presentation on, on May 30th. As we noted, and as Commissioner Etheridge alluded to tonight, and Vice Chair Jarvis, this is a different budget format than we've ever seen before. It is what is called a narrative budget. And what that means is, we try to explain in plain language what it is a county has done, is doing, and will do with the taxpayers' monies to provide services that they expect to receive in a county such as this. The narrative budget also included, as we requested each department to provide for their section contained in the budget, a mission statement, a statement of what they've accomplished in the current fiscal year, and what they seek to and plan to accomplish in the coming fiscal year. And then we also have included a capital improvement plan that you will be considering and adopting, that provides for a five-year forecast of capital planning for county facilities, and also financial policies that will ask you to adopt and lay out very straightforward how the county will operate itself from a financial policy perspective. It's not that we haven't had a good, good practices for many, many years. In fact, for 17 years, we've been awarded the Governmental Finance Officer Association Award of Excellence for our auditing practices. So we just want to continue to do as well as we've been doing, but again, to have some established policies and practices that we can look to as we go forward. I noted in the budget presentation that this is a place to call home, that Currituck County is a very attractive, prosperous county, and as such, we are very attractive to folks. And so we are seeing that in terms of the number of people who want to live here. In the 20, 20, 20 to 2022, we had an increase in population of 10.4%, making Currituck County the second fastest growing county in the state of North Carolina. And the years 2010 to 2020, we experienced a 20.2% increase in population. So people like Currituck County, and they're going to come live here. They also like to vacation here, as we continue to see 55,000 to 60,000 people come into our county, and particularly in Corolla during the tourist seasons. And we see further evidence of that popularity, of Currituck being a vacation place, with a 9.5, 6% increase in occupancy tax revenue over last year's large increase in occupancy tax revenue. These are challenging times, though, also for the county, and it's been a challenging budget. Many, but most budgets are challenging, but these were particularly, particularly challenging budget to put together because of the challenging economic times and last, last year's 8.6% average inflation rate. In fact, as I noted during the budget presentation, Commissioner Etheridge asked during a budget workshop that you all had earlier in the, in the year, how much tax would it take just for Curri, just for the county budget to come back to an even level due to inflation? And we determined that would be four cents of tax it would take to do that. That's, that equals 3.244 million dollars, just to bring us back to even due to inflation. I noted that we are, that the lay of our land and that we stand alone is also another factor in, in our budget and what we have to address in terms of service level. What do, what do I mean by that? Well, lay of the land geographically, we are a very interesting county, and geographically, it is difficult to provide services, and inexpensive services. As most, everybody knows, you have to go through another county to get to Corolla. You have to go to another state or take a ferry to get to Knott's Island and Gibbs Woods. And so we had these, these, these separated areas within the county that we still have to maintain a certain level of service, and that is costly to us due to our geography. Also, standing alone, what does that mean? Well, that means that we are one of two counties in the state of North Carolina that has no cities or towns. That means Currituck County is the only local government that is providing the level of governmental service that citizens expect. We don't have like a Dare County where there are six municipalities that can carry the load of law enforcement, can carry the load of planning and zoning, can carry the load of law, of, of fire, fire response. It's Currituck County and Currituck County alone. And so that is challenging to be able to provide an adequate level of service in a cost-effective and efficient manner. So then we're presenting now, what, what does the budget have in it? I noted that in the general fund, the largest driver of the general fund, the largest amount of money appropriated is to public safety and education. And so public safety, beginning with the Currituck County Sheriff's Office, the budget proposes $842,000, $42,103 to purchase and equip 11 patrol vehicles and five patrol SUVs. Badly needed, because our rolling stock is getting older and more expensive to maintain. We are returning also to a motor vehicle rotation schedule with the sheriff's office, so that we, after we catch up in fiscal year 2025, we won't be looking at probably more than 10 motor vehicles for the, for the sheriff each budget cycle. The detention center is experiencing a severe staffing shortage, much like the sheriff's office did last year, and we were able to take care of that through some modification of salaries. We are, we are proposing in this budget an incentive pay plan for detention officers in order to keep the ones that we have, and hopefully encourage others to join our ranks. We have also added this year, because of the tragic loss of life in schools through, through gun violence, $765,225 for six additional fully equipped school resource officers, and one deputy sheriff position with patrol vehicle to allow for backup for the school resource officers. And emergency medical services, because again, we are a place people want to live, people that come to live here have medical needs and medical emergencies. And so we are seeing an uptick, or increase in our emergency medical services calls. We also have old rolling stock. We acquired all our ambulance fleet at the same time in 2008. Those ambulances, after rehabilitation, have lived their useful life. And so this budget calls for two ambulances to be acquired at the cost of $810,000, with two ambulances, two ambulances to be acquired in the next four fiscal years. We also recognize a need for strategic location of our emergency medical services response, and so this budget will also include monies in order to acquire property on the west side of 168 in Moyoc preferably, for the future location of a new fire and EMS station in that part of the county. Fire services and fire response is, is important and critical, and we have a combined system, and we rely heavily, and thankfully, that we can rely upon our volunteers and our volunteer service to take on the bulk of the fire service. Again, another aging fleet issue, because most of our volunteer fire departments, or many of them, have vehicles or apparatus that are up to 30 years in age. They don't have this, this safety type of equipment that, that would, would be expected for, for firefighters to respond with. So we are going to be looking at continuing this year and in future years, buying a piece of apparatus until our stock is what it should be. This budget calls for $1 million for the purchase of a four-wheel drive engine that will be based at Carova Beach Volunteer Fire Department. The recommended budget also allocates 3% increase in the operating budget of all the volunteer fire departments, in addition to capital outlay funds to, to keep their facilities in top shape. The total recommended allocation in this budget for the volunteer fire departments alone is combined at $1,641,193. Communications is also an important part of our emergency response system. We are continuing to replace and upgrade our telecommunications system. We've been fortunate this year to receive a, almost $2 million grant from the state of North Carolina, and this budget allocates $500,000 as the county's match for that grant. Also, in order to come full circle and recognize our telecommunicators as an important part of our public safety network, we have added, will be adding, or proposing to add, an incentive program for telecommunicators, much like the sheriff's department and the, and the emer, sorry, detention center will, will be having this year. Historically, Currituck County has been a strong supporter of education, and this budget is no different. This year, it was noted that the school system had approximately $1.7 million in fund balance available, and that the county has taken the position that some of that should be utilized to help support the operations of the school system. With that in mind, this budget would allocate $13,035,602 for operating school, local current expense, operating monies, with the expectation that the school system will utilize $700,000 of their fund balance toward operating expenses, which effectively increases the current school allocation by 5.03%. The school system was also good about responding to the county's requests, as we were undergoing a capital improvement planning process with their own capital improvement planning process, and they provided us during the course of the, the budget preparation with their own five-year capital improvement plan. This budget will propose, in addition to $1.4 million that the county has for some years been providing to the school system for capital outlay, an additional $3,850,000 for year one of, of the school system's proposed capital improvement plan. $300,000 would also be expected to come from, from state lottery funds for capital programming, as well as $500,000 from the state public schools repair and renovation fund, for a total of $4,485,000 in capital outlay monies to our school system. A new elementary school, we just saw the elevations. It is expected or anticipated, at least at this point, that this elementary school will have a price tag of anywhere from $55 to $60 million. And this budget includes a first year debt service payment of $3,190,345, which will continue on for 20 years, is the type, the years of financing we'll be looking for. Hopefully, we'll be able to refinance that sometime in the future to reduce the interest rate and, and the years of the debt service. That will be, remain to be seen. We're also committed to higher education, as we will continue to fund college at the Alamo Marl and our partnership with them in the amount of $243,927. I presented to you some personnel changes, which I won't go into detail at this time, but I will point out that we did, we're able to keep our insurance premiums by finding a new health insurance carrier for our employees that will only cost the county a 1.1% increase in premium versus the 19 to 54% premium that our current carrier quoted to us. Under our enterprise funds, we're continued to, continuing to expand and improve our mainland water and, in particular, mainland water and our southern outer banks water systems, with the addition of deep, deep reverse osmosis wells for each of those plants, as well as an expansion of each of those plants. We will be looking to acquire land for a new convenience center in Moyoc area, and design the expansion of the Panther Landing Road Convenience Center in Moyoc. The county maintains a number of special revenue funds. These, these funds are for special service districts, and we have a number of them that provide services in a smaller geographical area within the county, to a greater extent than other areas of the county receive, because it's just not cost-effective to provide the service countywide, or it's not needed countywide. So just to highlight a couple of, of these service districts and some modifications, the Corolla Fire Service District, this budget will propose raising the tax there by one cent from five to six cents, due to the fact that that fire district is not quite paying its own way. Likewise, with Knott's Island Fire District, it's not quite paying its own way as it should, and so it proposed, this budget proposes an increase from five to six cents in that tax rate. You've heard a little bit about Hogbridge Ditch Watershed Improvement Service District. During the budgetary process, it appeared that, that Watershed Improvement Service District may not be no, any longer needed, and so there is proposed in the recommended budget that the, the tax rate be reduced from one cent to zero. But I haven't heard from some of you commissioners, it's my expectation and understanding that you will want to continue to assess a tax to provide for service within that watershed improvement service district, and I've heard from some that that might be up to three cents. And so that would, that would raise a little over $8,000 versus the one penny, which has been assessed over the last few years, it raises only $2,780. Ocean Sands North and Crown Point Service District for Watershed Improvement, that is a district that was created for the Ocean Sands subdivision to address serious flooding issues in that community. They have an advisory board that recommended that that tax be increased, so they can start moving forward on their project from 15 cents to 25 and a half cents. And so that is recommended in this budget. The Wellhead Stormwater Drainage Service District, created for the same reason, they pretty much finished all of their major projects, and so the proposal is to reduce their tax from 15 and a half cents to 10 cents. The Wellhead Beach Service District for Solid Waste Collection and Disposal, the recommendation is to reduce their tax from .019 cents to .015 cents. I noted to you, the cap- I noted to you, the capital improvement plan that the county is now pursuing and has before you, the recommended budget would allocate $4,239,000 for general fund capital projects, 1.6 million for special revenue fund capital projects, and 6.7 million for enterprise fund capital. Those were the water system improvements, the solid waste improvements I spoke about a moment ago. I spoke to you about, I mentioned to you about the financial policies, I think it will be a great thing for us to have in place, particularly to establish what is an appropriate fund balance amount. So we maintain an adequate amount of fund balance in this economy and community that's dependent upon the whims of weather, but not maintain too much of a fund balance that the public does not benefit from the county's savings, in essence. So this proposed budget is currently 77 million for the general fund, 77,365,427. As Vice Chairman Jarvis noted on page 15 of the budget, the copy that was again provided to the board, there is a listing of changes or modifications that occur in the document since the board last met in a work session on the proposed budget. I commend that to you for your review. And following the public hearing, if the board is inclined to adopt this budget ordinance for the county, I would ask that you do so by including, in addition, $1,100,000 in Section Two of the proposed budget ordinance for the county, in order to ensure the funding of our lifeguard services, and that you make sure in Section 33, if it is your intent to do so, to assess a three-cent tax in the Hogbridge Ditch Service District. That's my presentation. Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to answer. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from county manager? I will say, you know, for years, we've been talking about how to deal with the Moayak wastewater system, and while that's not in here, in addition to our budget, we are hoping for an appropriation from the state to take care of that, so that folks that are in Moayak don't have to bear that expense of the expansion of that plant, which has gotten exponentially expensive since we started that. So we're hoping for a 15 to 16 million appropriation from the state, so that we don't have to bear the cost of that as a county. What the county manager and the board of commissioners have been talking about is basically a 10-cent tax. We've been talking about this for some time. To put that in perspective, if you own a $100,000 home, it's an extra $100 a year, $200,000, 200 a year, 300,000, 300 a year. At 300,000, that's basically $25 more a month, is what it would equate to on a monthly fee for that additional tax for your home. None of us want to raise taxes. I think everyone recognizes what world we live in with the out-of-control inflation. We were very lucky to get by with only having to add four cents, just to keep up with inflation. And basically, the rest of the money is for our children. It is for schools, is for improving our schools. They need a lot of work, and we're committed to ensuring that their schools aren't crumbling down around them, and keeping them safe by adding six new school resource officers, and when the new Tolls Creek Elementary School comes on board, a seventh. And one component that hasn't been talked about is when we get into the next fiscal year, we will have to add probably another four cents to help cover the entirety of the debt for the new school. For now, we basically added in four cents to have some seed money. We anticipate that the debt will come in before the end of this tax year, so we need to have money to be able to pay some of that debt service as we move forward. That is why we installed a four-cent tax right now for that new elementary school, and will be, once we find out the final amount, the final tax rate will be set in the year to come. I think that's the only thing I had this evening that I wanted to point out of note. Anything else from the board?
I got a couple of things I just want to say. I'd like to thank the staff for all that they've done on the tax. One fortunate thing here for the county, our tax rate has not went up in a decade, 10 years. And that goes to not just Ike, but prior to Ike, Dan, and different things. I have a couple, I don't do things for political reasons. If I think it's right, I vote for it. If I think it's wrong, I don't vote for it, or if it meets the rules or don't meet the rules. So I'm not 100% sure if I'm voting for the budget tonight, because there's a couple of things that I'm not comfortable with that aren't in there. That being said, I'm not running for political office again, so I'm not doing it for that. So if somebody says, hey, the tax is rate up, rate going up, you're out of there, I'm not running again, so that's not, that'll take care of that problem. Like I said, they can get some fresh blood in here, and like you said, you have to cut things sometimes in the county, which makes it tough. We live in a safe place. We live in a good place to raise kids. My beef with, not beef, but a few things where I have issue is if you have to retrain somebody that works in the jail, or retrain somebody that works in dispatch, because we lose somebody, people don't want to work anymore. If we lose somebody to a neighboring county, you're spending 15, $20,000 for that new person, maybe for uniforms, maybe for training, for whatever. And, you know, when you're predominantly, I probably shouldn't say this, but when I think it, I just, you're predominantly counties that aren't as well off as us are doing major colas due to inflation, which is pretty much 9%. I have an issue with the cola. I've said it once, and I'll say it 3,000 times. You can give every county employee here a raise on a cola, except myself, and I won't lose any sleep over it. So I have an issue with that, but I get it. I mean, things are tight, but things cost money, and milk's not cheap, and all that other stuff. When I go back to employees' training, the night shift differential for your jail staff or your dispatch and the public safety stuff, those are stressful jobs, and if somebody's doing more, your local agencies are stealing people that were having to spend lots of money to retrain. I touched on the jail pay, the vehicles. Ike, the county manager, we talked about some stuff, I mean, like with the SROs, you know, the sheriff initially didn't ask for the SROs, but the schools wanted the SRO. Who would think somebody would harm a nine-year-old? We live in 99% of the time, a great country, but there is some sick individuals that ruin it, unfortunately. But, you know, so the school safety thing, I get it. Just the vehicles and stuff like that, like the county manager said, we have some vehicles that are in just, Forest spares are just in terrible shape, you know, but if we can throw some money to those vehicles to keep them up and going instead of buying six or seven new ones, I'm okay with that. But like I said, my main thing is just, there's a few of our departments, like especially the jail, I mean, like people in this room, they don't understand, like we do IBC transports. We don't transport somebody just to Hoski for a mental thing, to even Raleigh. We go to Winston-Salem, we go to Murphy. We've gone all, you know, Forest. So if the jail staff is super low, which it's almost 10 in the hole right now, the jail staff is super low due to other agencies, I brought this up, where we had a special meeting of, you know, they said what would fix it, and I said a couple dollars an hour across the board to make us competitive, which the county, great insurance, it's a great place to work, great, all that stuff, but at the end of the day, it's the dollar figure. And I brought that up, and I know the incentive plan's in there, but that's, you know, that's not going to hit a lot of the guys, so the jail pay thing, same thing with dispatch. I mean, so that's my only hiccups and hang-ups on the thing, and heck, that might make the tax rate a little bit higher. But those are my things, which, you know, we've talked about, because, you know, you have to address the elephant in the room sometimes. But I will say Rebecca and Ike and staff, finance, and everybody did an awesome, 10 years, the tax rate's been the same. And it went down two cents last year, which everybody paid more taxes, I paid more taxes, but your property values changed, so that's why. So, I mean, I get it, I don't want to pay more taxes, nobody in this room wants to pay more taxes, but I just think there's a few things in the budget that are crucial, especially the jail pay. When you're 10 in the hole, that's a huge liability for the county, and, you know, I stressed on that before, and we talked about what would fix it, and we said a buck 50 to $2 an hour across the board. And, you know, same thing with dispatch. I mean, when you retrain somebody and spend 20 grand for six months to train that person or 90 days, you're going to spend it one way or the other, is how I look at it. So those are my main two, or three or four things, hang-up on the budget, but like I said, it's, it is what it is, so.
So Commissioner McCord, are you, if I heard you right, so you don't think the tax increase is enough to cover what you want?
Either it's not enough, or there's some things that could be cut out, or whatever. I mean, I don't know, I don't know the answer. I mean, I know the, you know, the quality of life here is great, but we're going to hit some bumps in the road with the jail, it's just going to come up, because I mean...
May I?
Please.
You know, a budget is all about compromise. I know Ike and his staff have worked tirelessly, and, you know, you never get everything you want, and you certainly don't get anything for free, but we have made serious adjustments in benefits, we've made serious adjustments in incentives. We spent last year haggling over how much we adjusted our pay scales after a pay study, a three-year pay study. We can't every year give everything everybody wants at the expense of the taxpayers. 10 cents is, it's hard for me to stomach, but there is no alternative out there. There's not going to be a shiny pot of money that drops out of Raleigh, I assure you. It is up to us and our citizens to keep this county going forward. And no, we cannot give everything everybody maybe deserves, I'll even use that word, but we have to make tough decisions. We can't be up here doing what's just politically popular, or we don't need to be sitting in these seats. We have to make the tough decisions, we have to look at any way we can help ease those decisions, but at the end of the day, this is the best budget that we could hope for, and it appalls me that people will vote against it for the wrong reasons. It is a great document, it is hard to stomach a 10-cent increase, but at the end of the day, this board is partly responsible for the need for new schools, so we need to step up and pay for what we've approved. And that's all I need to say.
I'd just like to say, I mean, I brought this up, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You know, we have to face the consequences sometimes of our actions, like Ms. Jarvis said, and we have had uncontrolled growth in our county. And with that, we're putting a burden on our citizens, and to say, if you don't like it, the tax hike, just move out of the county, that's no, that's no answer. It's going to be about a 21% tax increase. I don't want to pay it, I certainly feel for some of the people who, it will be a horrible burden on them, but we have, we, like Ms. Jarvis said, we have created this, and now we've got to take care of it. Thank you.
I wouldn't say we created it, we have been party to it. There are things that were done before I got to this board, and when I got to this board, the idea or notion that we were going to have to build a new school was being talked about when I walked in the door. It did move forward much more quickly than anticipated, because a different model of building came to this county, and thanks to Trump, the county grew, the economy grew, the US economy grew, and people wanted to move here, and then throw in COVID, and people wanted to get the heck out of the cities and come to rural areas like this. So there are a myriad of factors that affected everything that happened in this county, and in the timeframe it happened. And so, yes, it accelerated the need for a school, probably by a couple of years, but it was always coming. It was always coming, it's been talked about, as soon as I walked in the door, we were had, within the first year, we had a joint meeting with the school board, and we were talking about the need for a new elementary school. The big question for us is, and we grappled with that today in our work session, is what is the trigger for a new school? Do you build it when you're at 80%? Do you build it when you're at 100% capacity, or 120%? Because if you build it too soon, you don't have enough students in the school. If you build it too late, you got kids falling out of the windows. So there's a, there's another line to that, and the other side of that is, the board of commissioners doesn't do that. We provide the financing, we are building the school, but we hand it over to the school board, and it is their job to then maintain that building with our help financially, but and then run the school system. That is what they do. So there's a, there's a give and take between us and them, and we rely on them to help us understand when it is time for a school, based on their occupancy.
And when you came on board, you were talking about the growth. When we came on board, we were also talking about controlling growth, and up until right recently, we've done nothing to really control growth. I think now, where we're talking about density and all that, we will put a little bit of help to the growth problems that we have in the county.
You know, and let me just say, you know, we're always hearing about schools. I grew up in the county here, and I remember when, all of a sudden, we had to have the new high school back in '77. So that had to get built, taxes went up to pay for that. Then in one year, we had to build two elementary schools, because of the growth in the south end of the county in Moayak. So we built them, taxes went up to pay for them, you know, then we had the high school go up, you know, so we've always been building schools for, we've always been growing. There's nothing's changed, the county's always grown ever since I've gotten here, we've always built schools. So, and it's always been funded, we pay them off, the taxes go down, and the schools get paid off, because the school debt's gone, and then we go until we need another school. But that's been like that, since I've been here, we've always built schools.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So there's a couple of things that I'd like to address. First of all, the comment or the statement of uncontrolled growth. We have definite mechanisms that are within this county that are land use plans, that are area plans. This county put together a board of the citizenry and some government folks that came up with where we wanted the growth to go. I've been on the board for now, gosh, too long, not as long as Owen, but in the eight years that I've served on this board, we've been talking about growth. In fact, the number one issue in this county for the last 30 years has been the growth in Moayak, the pressure on schools, and traffic. Nothing has changed in 30 years. Those same three reasons for concern 30 years ago exist with us today. One of the first things I heard was by a farmer, Greg Barca, who said, "The issue of the day was, what are we going to do about all these new houses coming in 30 years ago?", to which his response was, "My family's been here for a really long time." Harvey probably greeted the Barcas when they came ashore. "And when my family was here, we didn't complain when your family showed up. So now that you're here, you want us to close the doors and not allow anybody else in the county?" There's a reason why people want to move here. This is a great place to live. Now, as to the tax rate and the 21%, this, there's a lesson here, and I'll go to the conversation or the discussion about raising taxes and political expediency. We're elected to make hard decisions. We have not increased the rate of apparatus, fire apparatus purchased in this county in years. The average fire apparatus has now gone from 270 grand, which was the first piece of apparatus that has served on the FEAB, that we authorized to go forward, there are now $720,000 and take anywhere from one to two years to a purchase and get into this county. We have kicked down the road, because we didn't want to raise taxes, the purchase of apparatus, and we find ourselves anywhere from eight to 13 pieces of apparatus behind schedule. Now, you're going to pay me now, or you're going to pay me later, but sooner or later, that equipment has to be purchased. Crawford was a shining example of being able to find very decent equipment for very reasonably priced. When the economy started getting pressured, departments weren't getting rid of their apparatus the way they used to. Those things became hard to find and hard to get a hold of. 30 years is what some of our frontline apparatus is, and it's not just a question as to the safety features that are installed in those, it's the fact that there are major components that are going bad on those that are prohibitive to repair. So that's number one. We have always needed and identified schools and when they need to get built. This board, again, as Commissioner White stated, we fund it. We can't pick it, we can't select it, and we can't go forward until we get help from the Board of Education. We are now doing a great job of identifying that, but a case, a case in point, this Board of Education, or Board of, God, this Board of Commissioners identified the need for a large elementary school, and that's what we're doing. We're not only building a school with the capacity of 800 students, it is the capacity to grow by an extra 120 students. That's looking downrange, that's looking in the future and preparing for what the inevitable may very well be. We should be encouraged with that. So, you know, when we look at the amount of capital necessary, needs that are within the county's buildings, we have, we've been remiss in... the county's buildings, we have, we've been remiss in getting some of the buildings taken care of the way that they've needed. The school system has had similar challenges. 5.6 million, is that correct, capital? Ballpark?
Yes.
5.6 million dollars of our taxes are going to go to get the county's schools up to speed, to get major systems repaired, things that need to be done from a preventative maintenance perspective. If you wait to change your oil after your engine blows up, it's too late to change your oil. That's what we're trying to do. This county, for the first time since I've been a commissioner, is actually looking at, what are we doing? What do we need to pay attention to? Because if we don't pay for it today, it's going to cost five times as much down the road. And that's what we're trying to do. And, you know, it's, it's a tough pill to swallow. It's 10 cents in one year. But it's because we, to Kevin's statement, we haven't raised taxes. And so you can only wait so long and then it's going to, it's going to come and it's going to catch up to you. And if folks wait for their roof to cave in around their house, it's a lot more expensive than replacing the asphalt shingles on your roof. Right? So that's the same thing in the county. Anyway, I, to Commissioner Jarvis's point, I'm not getting everything I want in the budget, but I challenge anybody that if you don't like what we're spending money on or you think we need to spend more money in places, if you don't want to pay more taxes, I invite anybody to let us know what you would cut out of our budget that we can cut because we, we can't cut teacher salaries, state mandates, state guidelines. I don't think there's a whole lot we can cut out of social services because we're required to provide a level of support. There's not, when it comes to budgets, this county doesn't have any fat in our budget. Anyway.
No, I agree with you. I just, like, my main thing is, we had a meeting six months ago and the jail pay was my number one thing on there. I mean, like I said, you can, I can want 10 things, but obviously, we, the county manager, the county finance and everything, we run a good budget. But, you know, we talked about the catastrophic in the jail where the jail doesn't hardly do transports anymore. I know that because I work at the sheriff's office. So when you're doing that and we're sending a guy out, we're taking service off the road. And I just think it's catastrophic with the jail where it's, you know, we've been eight to 10 in the hole seven, eight months. That's why I brought it up six months ago and it's not in there. So that's my main, and it's not because I work at the sheriff's office, it's as far as a service to the citizens, just like Commissioner Beaumont said, what are we going to cut out? You know, responding to somebody's house for EMS if they, you know, cut a finger off or something like that? I mean, like I said, it's, I'm not, 90% of the budget, whatever, maybe even 95, I'm good with, but there was a couple of things that I think personally are catastrophic that I'd like to seen in there and that's my main hang up and.
Ike, have, have we, we have not implemented any of the suggested things for that department yet, have we? I mean, we had, we had, we would have to put more money in for training and it's going, it would begin this year's budget, is that correct?
You mean for detention, sir?
Yeah.
Well, again, we, we proposed funding the incentive program and we'd like to give that a try.
So we haven't even got there yet?
No, we haven't even started that.
All right, that's my point. Is that, so, you know, while Kevin brought this up a while ago, we just can't pull money out of the sky.
Correct.
It has to come from somewhere. So it is in the budget to incentivize some of the employees in there and furthering their education and, and then, and they will receive more money for furthering their education. We did that with the sheriff's deputies. It's actually mimicking a plan that we did with sheriff's deputies to incentivize them to make them better officers and thereby increase their payroll. And in doing so, that increases their benefit package too. So as we do that, the, their contribution goes up that we, to their retirement plan and things of that nature. So all of those things though add up to real money. They're exponential, they, they build on top of each other and it's every single year. So when we do a COLA, it's, it's just exponential every single time. It's a COLA on top of existing COLA, on top of an existing COLA. We did do, just as, as Kevin was talking about and Selena, we went and looked at every single department, realized that we were underpaying our staff and went through every single department over a couple of years and increased the payroll within those departments, incentivized different departments for, through education. And so the county employees here, we also were able to save a ton of money on their health insurance this year. They have a pretty good health insurance plan and, and a great retirement system. Well, Carolina has one of the top retirement systems in the country. So, you know, it's, it's a much bigger benefit package to the employee here than just their pay at a base rate that, that has to be accounted for whenever we do these payroll increases.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As I said earlier, this is the 21st county budget I've had the opportunity to work on and this is by far the toughest one that I've had to deal with. You know, the growth that we're seeing, that we've seen in Moiaq, that was put into place in 2007 and eight with the rezonings that took place. And this board had to deal with those rezonings as the state law mandates, we had to deal with them. In actuality, the only projects that this board has approved has been, there's about, about 80 homes has been built from the two big subdivisions that we've approved. I said a long time ago that our farmland in this county was getting too valuable to farm and the average age of our farmers are getting older and older. And, you know, when a man comes time for him to cash out his asset in terms of farmland or a woman, you know, where are they going to sell it to? A farmer cannot cash flow farmland off the current commodity prices. So they've got to look at developers and that's where they're going to look at. But this budget has been tough and I'm going to correct Kevin. Kevin, we've not had a tax rate increase in 27 years because we had an initial, when I came on this board in 1994, we had an initial tax rate increase because of the school bond referendum that was passed by the citizens. Since that period of time, the rate has been cut four times through different efforts that we've made. So if I look at it, and I'm not going to say that people's taxes haven't gone up because values have gone up, but can you imagine what the taxes would be if we had not been in a position where we could have cut those, that rate four times? And that equates to about half of what this tax rate increase will provide this time. And, you know, if we want to stop growth and development, then somebody's got to buy this raw land and just put it in conservation easements forever. That's the only way you're going to control the growth.
Owen, the, the tax rate in 2013 went from 32 cent to 48 cent.
Yeah, but that was because of revaluations.
Yeah. And that was because of 08, yeah.
You're not talking about the actual rate?
Oh, no. I mean, like I said, we live in a great place and I, I made, I'm the one that made the comment on the thing far as the taxes. I mean, we're very, very low compared to everywhere else. I'm not a malicious person. I didn't say if you don't like, I've said the comment, if you don't like it. The ones that go on social media and want to complain about this, that, this and that and this and that, I don't care if they move. I honestly put that out there. But I'm not saying that to anybody. I don't want an elderly person to struggle to pay their bills or stuff like that. I mean, I, you know, I'm human, we're all human. But I mean, it, I mean, like you said, there's nowhere, if it went to 56 cent, there's nowhere where we're within 10 cent of anybody. I mean, it, it is what it is. I mean, like you said, it's, I don't know, but I just, the jail thing was my major one. I'll put it out there. I brought it up six months ago, 10 in the hole, because that's going to be a service from the community far as when a deputy's on the road has to transport, which we do, IBC transports 15 to probably 25 a month. That's, you know, counting somebody sitting maybe 12, 24 hours at the hospital with a violent patient who has a, an issue. So that's taking the guy where if we had jail staff like we did in the past, they transport and take them. So it's just, that's my biggest hang up because we're losing a service as well as it's hard to fill those slots because of the, the pay. And the incentive might help some, but I brought it up six months ago and everybody in this board said, "Hey, we'll throw something at it, see if that fixes it." And I've said, "Hey, I'll be quiet."
That's what we're doing.
No, we didn't.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
We all have remembered a movie called The Perfect Storm. And that's what we've got called in this year, The Perfect Storm in terms of this budget. Because we did delay things because of COVID and now with the new school coming in and we didn't anticipate having to hire SROs for the elementary schools. So we've been caught in a perfect storm and we've got to find our way out of it and we've got to deal with it or else we're not fulfilling our responsibility to the citizens of this county.
Thanks, sir. All right, I think we beat this horse a little bit. We do have public comment for this agenda evening, this evening, so I'll start in on public comment. Have Billy Fincher signed up this evening.
Can Harvey go before me?
Sure.
What kind of stuff wanted something?
Not a problem. Harvey, you know the deal, you got to name, name and address for us, right?
Harvey Roberts, 489 North Indian Town Road, Shawboro.
Thanks, sir.
I got a question. I didn't find out until June the 6th that the county manager proposed no tax for the Hogbridge Service District. So in the budget, he said no tax, we stopped collecting taxes of 1 cent in the Hogbridge Service District. And then at the very last, I didn't understand it, something by 3 cents. So are y'all now going to give us 3 cent per hundred? That's what I can't follow.
Yes, sir.
The budget says no, no money.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what we're suggesting is in response to calls and emails and Owen talking to people within the district that one penny doesn't do anything, it's a couple of thousand dollars a year, and so 3 cent would help build money faster to have money available to keep that ditch up and running.
I'd just like to say, in, in all of this information that says, you know, $100 for administration or the finance officer. We have no problem with that, but a stormwater technician, we don't need to take any money at for a stormwater technician. There's three commissioners that are elected, three commissioners that are elected by the citizens. Myself, Greg Barco and Wilson Snowden, oh, Wilson Roberts. We have always taken care of the ditch ourselves. We find out, know what's wrong. We don't need to pay anybody from Currituck County to administer this money. So what's, what's the answer on that?
It's been eliminated.
It's, we've eliminated.
Huh?
The technician's been eliminated.
Well, actually, the technician is going to be filled. This $710 is a fee that is a pro rata share that comes from our indirect cost plan that's provided to us by a consultant that all districts and other county functions pay back to the general fund because of the legal services, the management services, all the other myriad of services that are provided, finance, in order to maintain these various districts and funds. And so I would submit to you that it would be the intent to continue to have Hogbridge Ditch, like every other, pay their pro rata share of management necessary for the operation of the, of the district.
Does that include a technician though?
Well, that's just a, a, a very, a very small portion of the technicians, of the indirect cost for services.
It's accounting. It's.
Right, right.
I, I get it. It's, it's.
Somebody's got to pay for that.
Somebody's paying it everywhere.
And especially when it's, they're, they're doing some direct service to a direct.
I thought we were going to eliminate the technician.
I think we talked, we talked about it when Harvey brought it up, when we, we had a work session with him.
Well, we were moving.
He wanted to know what.
The stormwater technician will be moved into the utilities department. But again, it was not just working for Hogbridge Ditch, but, but overseeing and helping to maintain the function of all the service districts, particularly those that are related to stormwater management.
So they're not paying for the whole technician?
Oh, no, absolutely not. 1% perhaps.
1%? That's definitely not.
And this is a county service district and so the county will be collecting the assessed tax. The county will be going through its fiscal and contracting policies to contract for the services that will be implemented within the district.
Okay.
I'd like to respond to that. Every one of you, I think, have got a copy of this. Hogbridge Service, Hogbridge Ditch was formed as a jury ditch in 1916. Since 1916, the people that live within the service district have elected three commissioners to look after it. I want all the public to know, the three commissioners have been looking after this hog bridge with no county help since 1916. Why all of a sudden does the county need to take funds from us? We're getting very little anyway. Why do you need to take any money to help advise us what we already know? I've talked to 15 different farmers. They're all in favor of keeping.
All right, hang on, hang on. You asked a question. Hang on, hang on, Harvey. You asked a que, hang on, hang on. You asked a question. Let's answer that. Okay?
In 1916, there was created, under the general statutes, what's called a jury ditch. It was by the clerk of court at that time, the spirit court of Currituck County created it. The clerk of court appoints the board that is responsible for overseeing and managing the jury ditch. For some reason, I was not here at the time, the county then, in night, what, late 1900, 1900, 1990s, created a service district, a county service district overlaid upon the same boundaries as the 1916 jury ditch. Now, what that allows is for the county, as we are proposing, to assess a tax to then provide, as I mentioned earlier, a higher level of service in this smaller geographical area of the county than is feasible to provide countywide. And so that's, that's where we are. But, but the statutes provide that the governing board for a county service district is this board of commissioners, not jury ditch commissioners that are appointed by the clerk of court to, to govern a jury ditch created under a whole different set of statutes. And that's why when this came up before in a work session, I proposed to the board at that time, well, we've got a duplication of services. The jury ditch representative seems to want to handle everything, then let's repeal the county service district and allow the jury ditch to maintain their own governance and raise their own assessments, which they have the authority to raise their own revenue for their own projects. And so that was a proposal in the recommended budget was to zero out the tax and in the coming fiscal year, repeal the service district.
So the jury commissioners would bill folks and collect.
That's correct.
Right? And get all of that out of the county's hands?
Yes, and so. That's what I thought we, we had agreed to before.
So is that what you want? Do you want to collect your own taxes and bill people?
And two, when 2000, we'd never collected any money yearly from anybody. There was basically only 21 landowners that had the property. Now, because we're having subdivisions, 10 acre subdivisions, other subdivisions come in, now, I haven't counted, but probably have 60 people. And in 2005, I've been collecting all the money since 1990.
So you have been collecting money. You just said you weren't collecting money.
Well, no.
You don't, you don't want, you want to collect money or you do not want to collect money? You.
We, the service district, we asked the county to collect money in 2005. You've been collecting money every year since 2005. It wasn't till last year or so, you took out $100 for administration, 710 for stormwater technician. I want everybody to hear this. That's $810. We only collecting 2,500. You're taking a third of our money. That only leaves us $1,700 a year. How can we do anything with $1,700 a year? How many hours of a bulldozer excavator can you get with $1,700 a year? We asked the county to collect the money. I personally didn't want to collect the money from people, have a checkbook and all that stuff. So we need.
Is there an expense associated with collecting money?
We need the funding that you're getting, the one set or the three set.
Harvey, is there an expense associated with sending out bills, collecting money, overseeing contracts, stroking checks for that? Is there an expense associated with that?
Yes, but the county, the county is giving all these people a tax bill for their house. You're giving them a bill for 200, what, $47 for stormwater. And the Hogbridge Service District, you've got a $500,000 house, you're paying $50. So we need the money, put it under a place with the county that's, that's audited properly and I only ask for money when it's needed.
Okay, so the way our service districts work, they finance and they pay for themselves, right? So we're not asking citizens in Moiaq to pay for this, for the jury, the jury commissioners, correct? We're not asking Moiaq to pay for the operation of Hog's Ditch. Correct?
Yes, you are. The Hogbridge Commissioners, we don't take any money for ourselves. All of our work is donated free. We use 100% of the money for, for bulldozers or get beaver dams.
At the, at the end of the day, if we collect the taxes, we have to. At, at the end of the day, if we collect the taxes, we have to administer them. The county, we, the county, have to administer them. We cannot hand that money over to you unless it's through a contractual obligation to do the work.
Well, the county needs to contract with the three, the three drainage commissioners to get the work done.
Do you have a contractor's license?
I, I think these landowners here will say they're in favor. You should've got emails from people in the 10 acre lots.
We're reinstating.
That we need, we need the money.
So, we are reinstating it. You just don't get the money. We, the county, account for that money. And you said properly account for. We get audits every year. We turn in everything. As manager noted, we have been awarded excellent, you know, reviews on our, on our practices. The deal is, since it's, it's a tax that we collect, we have to administer it. You are not a contractor who's gonna perform those services to excavate the ditch. We would contract with someone. If you wanna speak, I will call you up in a minute. But this is getting out of hand. At the end of the day, you either want us to collect the tax for this or you don't. It's that simple. If you're gonna be the jury commission, then you need to be responsible for going out and collecting those monies from anyone that's on it.
There is a cost associated with doing business.
We have no problem with a hundred dollar.
And if the county is doing the administrative management of what they are, it is not appropriate for anybody outside of the service district to pay for those services.
Nobody pays outside the service district.
They do. If we don't charge the overhead, it's costs associated with administering the taxation, the collections, and the disbursement of funds and the audits.
There's personnel involved.
We, we don't need to pay a stormwater technician. The farmers themselves know what to do. If you want to go up on administration fee from 100 to 500 dollars, I can live with that. But don't take a third of our money for, for administration. The farmers themselves, the drainage commissioners, we can take care of. We don't need to be paying a county person. We've never paid them before since 1919.
And, and thus, the suggestion that.
That we get rid of it.
We repeal the service district and allow the jury commission to handle this matter.
I think there is some concern that the county would be better suited handling this as, as what I've heard, so.
Let me speak about the Moyoc District. My understanding is, you took 30,000 dollars away from the Moyoc District. You got 200,000, 195,000 dollars of work was identified in 2019. Quabell, Quabell Associates identified 21 projects, 191,000. The county has not spent one dime or has not spent any money on that 195,000 dollar project that was engineered by Quabell Associates in 2019. They got all this money and you're gonna take 30,000 away from them for administration?
What are we doing with that?
We had, we had a pandemic. They interrupted many projects.
There's a little bit of something happened in 2020. Kinda shut stuff down.
And so, so we are proceeding in this coming fiscal year to utilize our fund balance in those, in the Moyoc District to start moving on projects.
And before 2020.
All right.
You had like three women, three men at advisory board.
Yeah.
Citizens and farmers. Why hasn't that been re-instituted? Citizens and farmers that live in the community, they know where the water drains. They know what needs to be done. Not some engineer you pull in here. People who live.
Harvey, Harvey, we talked about this last time you were in front of us.
Right.
So, we, we, we know what needs to be done because we have a Corps of Engineers study and, as you mentioned, Quabell also looked at this stuff. So, we know what needs to be done. Now, it's just getting the work done, which will happen when we approve this budget. It will free up those funds and the county's gonna move forward with going out and clearing ditches. Stagging clearing, doing whatever we can do to improve drainage within the Moyoc watershed district.
We were only getting 1,300 dollars a year and now it's up to 25. We spend whatever we can every year. We don't hold money 20, 20 years in Moyoc District and not spend anything. I've, I've said enough, you know, we're.
Yep, thank you.
Joanne Anfield?
Yes.
Harvey, please, let's take our 3%. Ever, if y'all will give it to us, and let the county manage the money. I can only tell you from working in the bank, Harvey, it may not look like they have to manage money, but they have to manage money and their fees involved in it.
Okay.
Please don't let them take our money away because of a, a registration fee.
What's the expense, what's gonna be the expensive of stormwater technician with the 710 dollars this year? How much you gonna take next year?
I don't know that offhand, but whatever the indirect cost analysis says.
And we're actually gonna see some, we're gonna see a county employee on the ditch. The other person had, I never saw him, saw him out anywhere on the ditch, so.
All right, thank you. All right, well, Joanne, did you wanna speak again? Okay, well, thank you.
Please don't take our money.
Okay. How about you, Billy? All right, how about you, Billy? You good?
I think you answered everything.
Okay, man. All right, appreciate it. All right, and we have Gene. No, okay, you're resigning, no. All right, so I think that we have a majority over here that would like us to implement the three cents. Okay.
The 15 farmers I've talked to are not here to express their opinion.
Okay.
The farmers are opposed to having a stormwater technician.
All right, all right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak to anything about the budget this evening that is in the room that did not sign up? All right, seeing no one jump up, I will close the public comment. I think we have talked enough. Is there any other discussion from the Board of Commissioners?
None good.
All right, we have a few things that need to change as we move forward. We're gonna, I guess, can we have multiple motions or additions or, it's kinda weird.
I think I can pause off.
First, the county attorney, I think, wanted to speak to the method by which.
Oh, yeah. We need to excuse Kevin, right?
We do, yes. So, because Commissioner McCord is also employed by the sheriff's office, we will have to do a preliminary non-binding vote. It's not binding. The budget does have to be voted on as one. It can't be piecemeal.
Okay.
So, Commissioner McCord will just have to leave the room. We do a non-binding preliminary vote just on sheriff's budget.
Okay.
Then Commissioner McCord comes back in and then you vote on the budget as an entire item.
Okay. Do we need a motion to recuse him from this discussion?
I move to recuse Kevin from this discussion.
All in favor?
I didn't disclose that in the, because I didn't think that would be an issue.
You got a conflict, Kevin.
Yeah, I apologize.
Uh, we have an astute county attorney who is.
Megan, you're all over it.
Right.
To walk out. We knew that he was with the sheriff's department. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, Kevin. You reckon?
Could you please hurry up?
All right. You can just, you can just go in there. This is gonna take about two minutes or less.
Shut the doors.
All right.
As, as proposed, the, the, the budget would allocate 10,773,933 dollars for operations of the sheriff's office.
Okay.
I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Kevin.
Kevin, you're good.
Wake up.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, so now, back to my original question. Is it better for Paul to just lump it all together or would Owen like to put his three cents in in his motion to make, approve the budget than since he's oversaw 21 of these?
Well, again, we wanna make sure that in section two, we add.
1.1 million.
1.1 million appropriations.
And, under section 33.
Yes.
Three cents for the Hogbridge Ditch.
Yes.
You did it.
And they keep the money.
I took.
All right, and, and the overall budget?
So, I move to approve the budget with those two additions.
Okay. I'm gonna go a little bit different tonight and ask if there's any opposed first.
Do you have a second?
No, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Now, are there any opposed to this budget? Signify by saying no.
I just stated my stuff earlier, but.
Okay, thank you. All right, hearing no votes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all. And we will take a break, let everybody fall out of here and jump back into it again. Thank you. Next up this evening is another public hearing, PB 23-07 Oak Trail Solar. Oak Trail Solar LLC is requesting a special use permit to add 2,000 square foot operation and maintenance building on the previously approved solar energy facility. The parcel containing the proposed building is owned by Karen Jarvis, is located off Putt and Red Road, Tap Map, Tax Map 10, Parcel 11 in the Moyoc Township.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be presenting this one for staff tonight.
Thank you.
Maybe. It is. Oh, I was gonna say, it should be advancing here, but it's not. It stopped, it stopped.
To the applicants, we, we do know what we're doing here most of the time.
I'm gonna go for Deb.
Are you gonna swear in witnesses first?
Yeah, let's do that while they're, while they're getting this. Thank you all.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Anyone that's gonna be presenting evidence tonight? Should be several bobbles. All right. If you all would place your left hand on the bobble and raise your right hands. Do you all solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. There we go. We got it up and running.
Thank you. I apologize. Deb had to come touch it, you see. That's what happens. So, as the board may recall, oh, and I'm gonna use a word I learned tonight, judicial notice. You've heard this before. This, the Board of Commissioners granted a special use permit for this property, for these properties, I should say, back in November 16th of 2020 for a solar energy facility. And it's for all of these properties here. And it is 1,229 acres. The site is zoned agricultural and the facility is currently under construction. So, what this request is for specifically is this parcel right here, and I'll zoom in on a site plan in just a second. But it's for this part, portion of the project, this parcel, parcel here, to be allowed to add a 2,000 square foot operation and maintenance building. And I know it probably seems a little odd for you to be seeing such a small request, but unfortunately, there's not wiggle room in the UDO to approve this administratively. It specifically says that a site plan is required and that the site, as a part of the use permit, that a site plan is required and that the site plan had to show all of the buildings. So, that's why we're bringing this for, before you today. And again, just to orient you, this is the subject parcel. And then to zoom in just a little bit, this little speck here will be the 2,000, up to 2,000 square foot building. And I'll help you a little bit more. Again, you'll see, this is the top of the parcel that I will point to here. And then there's a heavy vegetated tree line and, and then the additional buffering and fence line that's required with the solar energy facility. So, the parking and associated building, again, will be behind those required buffers and the fence line. The building will be, will not exceed 20 feet in height. The building, parking and associated driveway to get to the building is an additional 1.32 acres of land disturbance and that has been reviewed through our technical review committee. And the committee does recommend approval. Just as a reminder, the property in the Imagine Currituck Plan is zoned O2, which is reserved lands. Moyoc Small Area Plan, it is split through rural and limited uses. The O2 classification was comprised of wetlands, environmentally sensitive areas, significant natural heritage areas, et cetera. And it does allow for limited single-family residence and should not be targeted for a significant growth area. In the Imagine Currituck, the land use goal and policy two is the one that you used previously. And that speaks to carefully considering the design and location and of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses to mitigate compatible uses. And then in the Moyoc Small Area Plan, again, this is split zoned or split classified, I should say, with about 10, 30 acres being rural and 200 acres being in that limited classification. The policies that you used previously for the, the small area plan include that FLU 1, which speaks to promoting compatibility between new and existing developments, and that policy BI 4, which speaks to providing industrial development opportunities for cluster industries identified by Currituck Economic Developments. And it, that does specifically speak to alternate energy sources. And one of the things that the applicant requested and is a good refresher for you, the use has begun on the property, so the use permit will not expire. And adding this building to the use permits, it's, it's essentially a new use permit to add this building. That will not affect the expiration of the use permit. It will not expire. And these are the SUP review standards. And I'll be happy to answer any questions now or once you hear from the applicant.
Question? I do have one question and I might have a couple for the applicant. What's, what type of building is the 2,000 square foot building they're gonna build? Like a maintenance barn kind of?
It is. It's in your packet. Let me see if I can give you a page number. It is a metal building that's proposed.
Page 346.
My computer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They included that elevation as part of their application that's in your packet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, do you have anything else?
May, maybe for the applicant, but she, that's, that was it for that right now.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'll invite the applicant up or their representative. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Merrick Perrin. I'm an attorney with Parker Poe Adams and Bernstein. Business address is 301 Fayetteville Street, Suite 1400, Raleigh, North Carolina. Pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Oak Trail Solar. I was fortunate to be in front of you in 2020 when the use permit was initially approved and glad to be back here tonight. I have also here with me on behalf of the applicant, Matt Crook, who is the lead developer of the project, who you have also met. We also have two expert witnesses here tonight to speak to property value, and that is Nick Kirkland, as well as public health and safety, and that is Mr. David Bressert. I do also have hard copies of the PowerPoint and expert testimony that, if I may pass up, I will do that.
Clark?
Put this up here for y'all.
Thank you.
Can we go ahead and start?
We need to be qualified as an expert witness. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm just the applicant.
He's a project.
Got it. Never mind. Sorry. Go ahead, please. Continue.
Qualified applicant. My name is Matt Crook. My business address is 811 Louisiana Avenue, Houston, Texas. I'm here on behalf of Oak Trail Solar and regarding the amendment to the use permit to allow for an ONM building. A little bit about Leeward. We are a renewable energy company that has 24 different renewable energy facilities across the United States. We're developing 100 wind, solar, other projects in, in, in different areas throughout the United States. I think one key thing here is that we are an operator of, of renewable energy, so we do operate a lot of wind farms and other solar, solar facilities as well. We are a part of the Omer's infrastructure that, that invest in renewable energy projects. And I think if you look on here, I mean, this is kind of an example of some of the projects that we've done and how we like to be collaborative and, and work within our communities. This is another look at that conceptual plan. You can see that this is just south of Moyoc on Karen Jarvis's property. The drive there is that main service entrance into the project area where you have the construction trailers at now. That drive will. That drive will remain there, and this is kind of an extension of that drive to go to roughly a two thousand square foot O N M building. That building will be fifty percent conditioned, fifty percent unconditioned, where the unconditioned space is really for kind of storage, for lawnmowers and things like that. The conditioned space is space for kind of a kitchenette and a bathroom for folks that would be at the site doing maintenance work. This is kind of looking in a little bit closer to that O N M building. So in January two thousand twenty-one, we received the signed use permit approval. It permitted the solar energy facility on the property. We're looking to modify that permit to allow for this two thousand square foot building. Now I'll just walk through some of the use-specific standards. So the O N M building is designed to meet or exceed the use-specific standards under the U D O. Under the U D O, it sets forth these following standards, location. It says no S E F should be located in a full-service area. O N M building is not located in such an area, it's in the same area as the solar facility. It's currently located in approved maximum size. The O N M building will be sighted within the previously approved footprint, so it meets the maximum site size requirements. Setbacks, as mentioned, this is within the setbacks, the hundred and fifty feet from all D O T streets, hundred feet from any camma designated navigable water bodies, Army Corps or camma wetlands, or significant natural heritage sites, so the O N M building is, is within the approved, already approved solar facility footprint. So that automatically meets all setbacks. Height and configuration, as mentioned, it's not to exceed twenty feet above grade. The maximum height will be configured to avoid glare or anything like that. Also, as mentioned, it's, it's kind of behind heavy screening and vegetation that's already existing. Sound, the O N M building will comply with limitations on construction hours and is not within fifteen hundred feet from a public school or licensed preschool. So it's, meets this U D O requirement. Buffers and screening, um, part of the solar energy facility U D O, it's to have a type D opaque buffer certified, or certification within a hundred percent opacity reach with the maximum panel height within five years. Opacity to be assessed from exterior property lines, performance guarantee in place, et cetera. The O N M building is within the solar approved footprint, um, which meets all buffers and screen requirements. Development plan, we provided, an updated development plan will be provided in accordance with the previously approved development plan, which will be amended to include O N M building as part of the related minor site plan amendment application. So alongside with the use permit amendment, there will be a minor site plan update, which will go to the county to review. Environmental concerns, um, so appropriate ground cover, grasses required, grass and weeds not associated with pollinator habitat should not, not exceed two feet in height. Groundwater monitoring wells and testing requirements as outlined, ordinance shall be met. As noted in the approved use permit, twenty dash eighteen, Oak Trail will maintain appropriate ground cover and will comply with all the groundwater monitoring requirements in, in accordance with the U D O. Solar facility impact analysis, um, this is an analysis addressing the information outlined in the ordinance. It's required as part of the application for the facility. Oak Trail updated its previously approved solar facility impact analysis to include the O N M building and those impacts. That updated analysis was included in the exhibit, or sorry, the, the application Exhibit Three. Ditch maintenance, facility is responsible for maintaining all drainage ditches adjoining and traversing the site. Development shall provide a twenty-five foot maintenance access drainage easement, all measured from top of embankment. As noted in the approved use permit, twenty dash eighteen, Oak Trail will comply with the ditch maintenance obligations in the U D O and will adhere to the previously approved site drainage plan. Just for reference where this is located, it's not near a ditch or any of the maintenance areas that we would have to have any type of twenty-five foot easement. Discontinued use and decommissioning. This is a part of the ordinance that talks about decommissioning requirements and a plan that's needed to be submitted. Oak Trail will update its the previously approved decommissioning plan to reference the O N M building in accordance with the U D O. And so findings for the use permit, or use permit findings, the O N M building will not endanger public health or safety, will not injure the value adjoining or abutting lands, and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, will be general, in general conformity with the land use plan, thoroughfare plan, and other plans officially adopted by the Board of Commissioners, and will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including, but not limited to schools, fire, rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. Public health and safety, the, the O N M building will not endanger public health or safety. The O N M building is a low-impact use, it will not endanger public health or safety. The O N M building will be sighted within the fenced footprint of the solar energy facility and will be built in compliance with North Carolina Building Code. O N M building is essentially a joint climate-controlled workspace, unconditioned, unconditioned, um, storage space. No hazardous waste will be stored at the O N M building. And we have testimony from David Bressert, who is Leeward's Director of E H S Quality and Training.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Bressert, will you please state your name and business address for the record?
My name is David Bressert, my business address is sixty-six eighty-eight North Central Expressway, Dallas, Texas.
Can you briefly describe your job responsibilities?
As the Director of E H S Training and Quality at Leeward, I've got a staff that works for me and we're responsible for protecting what matters most, that's the lives and the health of all of our workers throughout the company.
Can you please describe your educational background?
I've got a bachelor's degree in engineering from Washington University and a master's in business administration from Fontbonne University.
And lastly, can you please list any professional licenses or business qualifications?
Yeah, I currently hold a Certified Safety Professional since nineteen ninety-five, construction, construction health and safety technician, Certified Utility Safety Professional, and Certified Hazardous Materials Manager, and an Associate in Risk Management.
Thank you, and with that, Mr. Chairman, I would tender Mr. Bressert as an expert in public health and safety.
All right, does the board accept him as an expert? Okay, thank you.
I'm appearing here on behalf of Oak Trail Solar regarding whether the addition of an onsite O N M building will endanger the public health and safety and whether the O N M building will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. I've reviewed the proposed site plan for the O N M building and am generally familiar with the area. The O N M building will be approximately two thousand square feet with a portion of the building to be climate-controlled, including workspace and restrooms with an attached small unconditioned warehouse space, and it will be designed in compliance with the North Carolina Building Code. The O N M building will be sighted within the footprint of the approved solar farm facility, which will be surrounded by a locked chain-link fence. Minimum warehouse storage space will be included in the O N M building, and there'll be no heat-producing equipment stored in or around the O N M building. The O N M building will not store, create any hazardous waste. Oak Trail employees and contractors will all, will comply with all applicable health and safety regulations, and the Oak Trail facility and the O N M building will be subject to annual E H S audits by my team. Based on the above facts, it is my professional opinion that the proposed O N M building will not endanger the public health or safety, and based on the facts above, it is my professional opinion that the proposed O N M building is in harmony with the area in which it is to be located.
Thank you, go ahead, please.
That's it?
Okay. Any questions?
I guess this might be for Matt, because he's the project manager. The building, and I believe you said at the beginning when I was looking at the notes, looking back, so where they have everything set up now, which is roughly, um, I don't know, a few football fields from Puddin' Ridge Road, is the O N M building gonna be right where the temporary stuff is now or a little bit further back?
It, it'll be further back.
I mean, like I said, I see the little dot on the thing, I mean. So it's a little further north?
But this is where the current, um, construction trailer and lay-down area is. It, it's kind of inside the woods and kind of around to the right. So if you are looking at where the construction trailer is now, it'd be back behind that, that kind of stand of.
Couple football fields possibly, behind it? Or further?
About, about a quarter of a mile.
Okay.
As much as about an acre, acre and a half of disturbance, so that road will extend up like it's going up towards Jarvis's Farm. And then kind of.
All right, how much significant to the, the property, the, the double wide on, on her property, how far would it be from that?
The double wide is, I think, down here.
So it's a good.
Further down.
Oh, either, okay, good deal, I just was curious, so it's gonna be deep on the property?
It's, yeah, it's, it's inside, it's inside where the solar area is, away from.
That answers it, thank you.
So, yeah, this map, I mean, this, the, her rental property is even further down here, so it's deeper.
I just have a, a couple of questions and concerns in the agenda packet. The information that was provided about the community meeting was completely unhelpful and not insightful at all as to what the thirteen citizens that showed up to the meeting, I have no idea what their concerns were, except for topics that were bulleted in a list. So I, I would like some clarification, what was the crux of their concerns? When you say concerns about construction traffic, well, what, what are their concerns? That's.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I get no insight from what was provided as far, titled feedback. So I'd like to know what the, the main concerns were.
Right. As mentioned, that, that wasn't a concern, it was questions about construction traffic and what was going on with traffic and things like that. We addressed those questions to folks that asked those questions to us. There were comments about muddy conditions during construction. We talked to them, I think we even provided vouchers for folks if they wanted to get their cars cleaned. So if people came, kind of talking about things not related to the community meeting, which was about the O N M building, we did address those questions or those concerns separately. We maybe not expanded on them, but this was kind of an opportunity for us to meet with folks. I would say, again, we're, we're kind of listing everything we heard there. Not everything was weighted as far as like a concern or an issue or.
So the main concerns about the O N M building were like where it was located and what's housed there. Were those the only concerns or questions that were posed about the building itself?
Those were basically the only questions, and they weren't even concerns. People did not say, hey, I have an issue with where this is located, or I have an issue with what's, might be in this building. It was, hey, where's the building at? And we, just as Mr. McCord was asking questions about where it's located and things like that, that was basically the, the transaction or the, the questions that we were receiving.
So all the others were about the solar farm itself?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so we had construction folks there as well at that meeting to address any of those questions.
Matt? I got one thing, if you give me a second. So you did bring up one thing, it was interesting, you talked about people having problems with their cars getting muddy or dirty. Is that just you guys dragging stuff out on the road as you're ebbing a flow of traffic in and out of the facility?
Some of it, and then, um, I think this was, I'm trying to think of when the timing was when we had our meeting, and we might have been wrapping up or people had questions about some of our delivery trucks and things like that. So, and I think we tried to address those and put those in place where we were cleaning the roads, doing, you know, trying to keep construction traffic from minimal impacts as much as we could.
So do you guys brush the roads down or something like that pretty routinely, is that the part of your process or something? Just trying to understand the day-to-day operation, and since you brought it up, it's, it's just of interest.
The day-to-day operation is probably not as much as impact as what is, what has happened. The construction is where you see a lot of impact, where there's a lot of, especially when panels are coming and being delivered. That's where there's a lot of, you know, semi-tractor trailer trucks coming into the site and leaving the site. There's aggregate that's different, there's rumble strips, there are things like that. I think they were trying to address a lot of those issues and just how the entrances are created. But that doesn't solve the problem when you have a lot of rain or there might be some muddy conditions. And so, you know, we wanted to continue to support our neighbors and, and things like that. And so that's why we were offering car washes to folks if they found that their cars were getting muddy by driving up and down Puddin' Ridge Road.
Okay.
I can tell you that there's not been any mud on the road since probably the middle of April.
So it doesn't matter what the weather is, right? You can't bring, and that's the purpose of a construction entrance, so that the, the dirt and the material that's on the site winds up on the roads. D O T doesn't say unless there's rain, right? It, the system is there to prevent material from getting on the highways. Correct?
You're saying the, like, the driveway entrance system?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, that was all built to basically rumble anything that might be driving over to shake off any loose mud or anything like that.
Did you figure out what was not, what was wrong with that system?
All that rain.
Yeah, not, not sure.
I mean, how do you prevent it the next time it rains, is my question?
So the next time it rains, there won't be as much construction traffic or activity. There's not gonna be trucks that are entering and leaving the site. Things that are going to be entering and leaving the site will be like pickup trucks and things like that.
So all of the construction's done, or all the deliveries are done?
Pretty much, yeah. Now, as this site is operating, there might be things that change out.
Oh, no, I.
But it's not gonna be near as much.
And then the other thing I, I had heard was there was a, a problem with flooding due to, no?
Flooding onsite or flooding somewhere else.
Like due to the covert that had been installed that wasn't the right size or something of that effect? I, I had read complaints about flooding due to the construction. You know, nothing?
Onsite, I'm not aware of.
Well, it's been a minute since we had rain.
I know there was some stuff, there was some complaints like off of Cooper Garrett Road where it flooded and stuff like that. And I know, I talk to Reggie a couple times a week, I know Reggie from N C D O T, multiple times went out there with, with, not Matt per se, but Matt's group. And, you know, Reggie said if he would call and said, hey, I got a complaint, they'd sweep the road. They would, you know, he said they, they were, y'all were good neighbors, so you're trying to do is?
I've been out at Cooper Garrett Road before this construction started, that's been washed out and D O T out there, you know, smoothing out aggregate and things like that. I think they did work with us on some, like, us using some of our tractors to help smooth out aggregate, things like that, but I don't. I don't think that was caused by.
There was a little, there was a little bit on, on Puddin', or on Cooper Garrett when we had gotten some rain in the wintertime.
Cursor to Logan's Runner.
Yeah, it was, it was like February, there was some stuff where there was some, there was some rough, rough areas.
Our, our site, you know, if there's any water retention, it's all on site. And it doesn't, should not be going into Cooper Garrett Road or anything like that. And I don't think we changed out any of those culverts on Cooper Garrett Road.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Appreciate it. Not yet.
I can give expert testimony to you.
To property value in harmony, do you want to, I can talk through this unless, all right. So the O and M building will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. As mentioned quite a few times, it's within the solar energy facility already, so that's, this has already been approved. The, the building will be within the solar facility setbacks, and it'll be behind the required solar facility vegetative buffer. The O and M building is more than 1,200 feet away from the nearest residence. I think that's a direct answer to that question. I think that would be the nearest residence, and it's over 1,200 feet away. Approximately 2,000 square feet of a, of a building. It's similar visual profile to a single family rural residence or an accessory building like a, like a garage. And we have Nick Kirkland here, who's a state certified general appraiser to speak on behalf of this.
Thank you. Please state your name and business address for the record.
Nicholas Kirkland, 9408 Northfield Court, Raleigh, North Carolina.
And what is your job title?
State certified general appraiser in the state of North Carolina and the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And can you describe some of your job responsibilities?
So what we do is we get asked for fair impact studies like the one that I'm here to present to you tonight to determine whether or not a use could have an impact on adjoining property values. We're hired by opposition to things like this, developers of things like this, local governments. We also do regular bank appraisals and narrative appraisals for land and stuff for the state's tenor.
Thank you. Can you please describe your educational background?
I have a bachelor's degree in communication from North Carolina State University. I'm a candidate for designation through the Appraisal Institute, and I've taken all the required coursework to achieve the state certified general appraiser through the state of North Carolina.
And do you have, in addition to the ones you just mentioned, any additional professional licenses or certifications?
Not that I'm aware of.
State, state licensed.
I'm licensed in the state of North Carolina. I'm a state certified general appraiser as well as in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would tender Mr. Kirkland as an expert in property valuation.
Okay. We comfortable with that?
I kind of am. Okay, you said you're a candidate?
Correct. So a candidate for designation through the Appraisal Institute is their terminology, if you're in the process of becoming whatever they're offering. They, they have an MAI, SRA, and a number of other things. I'm personally working towards an MAI designation, however.
So that's above and beyond what a real state.
Correct. That's through a national group, yes.
Certification.
Good marketing. I'm here to present the Kirkland Appraisals Impact Study that was done in order to determine whether or not this would have, this proposal and in building would have an impact on the adjoining property values as well as would this be in harmony in the area in which it's to be located. To that end, we have a short impact study that was done. There's some pretty good photos in there to determine whether or not this would be in harmony. We looked at the immediate area just to determine is a building like this a common building in the market area? And what we found is on page four, there's a great picture that shows lots of little arrows pointing out that right up the road, there's a building like this in almost every backyard. This is going to be similar in size, appearance, and function to what a lot of people already have in the form of a detached garage or a workshop or a large shed or a barn in their backyard. Therefore, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use will be in harmony in the area in which it's to be located. Now, in order to determine whether or not this would have an impact on the adjoining property value, we've looked at negative externalities or negative factors or things about the proposed O and M building that could have an impact on adjoining property values. The idea being if something impacts the adjoining property value, there's a reason why. There's something about it that would cause it to have that impact. So I'm going to run through these very quickly. First, there's no hazardous materials as part of the development of this building or storage through this building, so there's no basis for an impact to the adjoining properties in that regard. There, there's no noticeable odor associated with such a building. The noise is going to be very consistent with a typical agricultural building or a workshop that someone would find in their backyard or in their subdivision community already in the existing area. So there's no basis for an impact over and above that. The traffic will not be over and above a typical single family residence, and on a track this large, that is a very minimal traffic amount, and no basis for an impact to the adjoining property values. Finally, there's no noticeable stigma or appearance issues with such a building, especially given that it's going to be over 1,200 feet from the nearest dwelling, and it will be screened through vegetation. Based on this information, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use will not have an impact on the adjoining property values. To that end, I can explain anything in the impact study that you'd like to hear.
Questions from the board? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Conformity with county plans. The O and M building will be in general conformity with the land use plan, thoroughfare plan, other plan, and other plans officially adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The Currituck County 2040 Vision Plan, this Northern Mainland Future Land Use Plan map classifies the parcel as being used for an O and M building as O two reserve lands. Appropriate land uses and development types for O two reserve lands areas include cultivated farmland, accessory agriculture structures, and low density single family residential structures and prioritized preservation of open space and natural landscapes. O and M building will be in conformity with the purpose of O two reserve lands designation as a similar visual profile to an accessory agricultural structure or low density single family residential structure. Impact on county facilities. O and M building will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire, rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. O and M building will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities because the building is not a use that involves residents. It will only involve minimal employees on site for maintenance and will be within the fenced area of the solar energy facility to prevent unauthorized access. It will not increase the need for new schools, strain existing schools, and will have much less need for fire, rescue, law enforcement than most uses such as residential subdivision. That concludes the presentation, and if there are any other questions or if I can help clarify anything, I'm happy to.
Thank you, board. All right. Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing. We have a public comment period. You all signed up. I'm going to assume that you said all you needed to say for the public comment portion of this. Is there anyone else?
I didn't have a chance to. I didn't know that was coming. I'd like to speak to positive and negative about the whole situation.
Are you testifying to?
I can testify.
Okay. Did you, we didn't swear you in earlier.
Swear me in, whatever you want to do.
Okay. So there's a bobble right under there. If you place your left hand on one, right underneath you.
I don't know. Anyway, you know, I'm Harvey.
Harvey, there's a bobble sitting right in front of you.
There's a bottle?
Yeah, step back and look down.
Bible.
You gotta be sworn in.
It's inside the Bible.
Oh, the Bible. Swear me in, okay. I'm at the age now with hearing aids, I can't hear and I can't see or anything.
All right. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say, a lot of this took place on January the 27th. I like to, for the county.
For, I need your name and address for the records.
Harvey Roberts, 489 North Indian Town Road, Shawburn, North Carolina.
Thank you.
I'm an elected official of Currituck County. I'm, I'm a soil and water conservation district supervisor. I'm elected to a term just like county commissioners. I have to take the same oath as county commissioners. I'm given expert witness here. I got a cell phone. The attorney, I like to enter my information in the cell phone and the public record to back up what I'm going to say.
I think there might be a question.
Yeah, what kind of information do you have on that cell phone? What kind of?
What can I inform you?
Pictures, a document? What, what are you talking about?
Okay. What I wanted to talk about.
I know, what, what's on the phone?
What is it? Because it may be hearsay, and they can't, and the board cannot consider that in making their decision tonight.
Nothing I say is hearsay.
But what the information on your phone may be, what type of information is on your phone?
It's direct email between me and some county commissioners and other people.
What other people? Are they in this room?
Commissioner Kevin McCord, Commissioner Owen Etheridge.
Are there any other individuals that are not in this room that are involved in those emails?
Probably Department of Transportation, Reggie, and then the boss over top of him.
Okay, so I would advise the board, those emails would be hearsay if those individuals are not in this room testifying.
And when did those emails go down? When did you talk with, when did you email with commissioners? Was it, how long ago did you have this communication with these two commissioners?
The first one was on January the 27th of '23.
Okay.
I don't want to get all the details of that because there were some.
The details are important, Harvey, because we need to decide if those are ex parte communications, whether, when this was submitted or, you know, and it sounds like you're outside of that timeframe, so those, those details are important.
I'd like to remind, I don't quite hear, understand everything you said, but I'm an elected official, just like all of you are. I'm an expert 36 years as a commissioner, as a soil and water commissioner.
Okay.
Do y'all recognize that? Am I an expert wis, witness?
Depends on what you're talking about.
It's firsthand, and I can back up what my emails were on the phone.
So you, you might be a witness to it, but maybe not an expert. Just because you're elected doesn't make an expert. We're not experts on anything.
I guess, Harvey, are you going to be testifying regarding the ditches and drainage?
Testifying against.
Yeah, are you going to be testifying on the ditches and drainage issues?
Some, but let me, let me just say, please don't.
Also, also, I'd like to remind the board that this is just for the O and M building, so it would have to be related to the O and M.
Thank you.
Building as opposed to the entire solar facility.
I, I want to address that, the building. I'm in favor of the building. I know where it's going to be located. It's not going to bother anybody, no property, I mean, it's not going to affect anywhere. I've been on the property four or five times. I got phone numbers of people own the property, other people from Texas that I've talked to. But anyway, what I don't say about the building, there's no problem where the building's located. It's going to be far off, no problem. When y'all saw that map of that whole thing, you said like 1,220 some acres for one farmer where the building's going to go. But then the other man up on the screen said there's another 1,500 acres from another Jarvis family. So the whole solar farm is 2,500 acres. Is that correct? Some?
What, what does that have to do with the building?
Nothing with the building, but what I'm.
But we're here to discuss the building.
What was up on the screen and what the attorney spoke to before was they're going to maintain the ditches. How many ditches are on 2,500 acres? They said they were going to mow within 25 feet of a ditch, just like all these solar farms.
As part of their original use permit, they have to maintain the ditches within their borders. That is, that is within, that's part of the conditions of their use permit when they came before.
Right. It says anything in UDO, anything over five acres, it must be addressed every three years. I'm telling you that these other solar farms, they have not mowed their ditches.
Okay, well, that's, we're not talking about that. We're just here about the building. If you want to address those things with the board or county staff at another time, that would be more appropriate. Tonight is not the time.
I'm in favor of the building. The location is perfect, no problem.
Okay.
No problem with the building.
That's, that's all we're here to talk about.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's another problem.
That's another problem for another day. Okay. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak tonight? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public comment. That's why we're going to.
Don't you ask Commissioner Etheridge to.
I am done with this, Harvey. You're interrupting meetings. Stop.
I'm an elected official.
You are, but you're not here as an elected official tonight. You're Harvey Roberts.
I'm an elected official.
Okay. Owen, do you have anything to add this evening, since he pointed at you? No, didn't think so. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion from the board? Someone like to make a motion on this?
We didn't get a motion sheet.
Uh, we didn't, did we?
You don't with use permits?
What's that?
You do not get suggested motion sheets with special use permits?
No, we usually do. Yeah.
I can.
That's pretty simple.
Bring it.
I got it.
You got it?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve. Let me get the right letters and numbers. PB 2307, O, solar farm, special use permit. And then let me go back to the other page for the information. 222.
Mike? Mike?
Because the building, oh, sorry. The building won't, the building is low impact and will not endanger the public safety or health. The O and M building is proposed within the footprint of the previous, previously approved SEF and will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. The use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans, including the O dash two classification comprised of wetlands, the Imagine Currituck Land Use Goal and Policy II, the 2014 small area, Moyoc Small Area Plan, a policy FLU1, policy BI4, and that the use will not increase or exceed the county's ability to provide services.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on. New business. Glasses so I can see. Resolution authorizing following of an application for approval of financial agreement for Tolles Creek Elementary School. Is that you, Ms. Morgan?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a procedural step to take before we apply to the local government commission for financing for the Tolles Creek Elementary School. This is a resolution that you are directing the finance officer to apply to the LGC.
Okay. Thank you. Any just questions, comments from the board? Kind of a motion for approval?
Motion for approval?
You?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any opposed? All right, next up, we have board appointments.
Slate.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the board appointments as a slate.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Or Kevin?
You can have it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, consent agenda. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
No.
So first. So first, second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will recess the Board of Commissioners meeting and move into a special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority. And same thing we dealt with earlier, the first item is the public hearing and possible adoption of the Tourism Development Authority annual budget for fiscal year '23 and '24. Does, do we need to go through anything on this one? Would you like, I could...
Well, this is presented to the board on May 30th, 2023. There have been no, well, there's only, there's one modification that after the public hearing, if you're intent on adopting the budget ordinance, I would ask that you add $1,101,000 to the total appropriations in Section 1 of the budget ordinance. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the proposed budget.
Questions? All right, I'll move to approve with the addition of 1.1 for Section 1.
This is a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. It's getting late.
Rebecca wanted to say something.
Right. No one has signed up this evening. Would anyone like to speak to the budget for this? For this budget? All right, no one showed up. Speak. I will close the public comment period. And now I'll move to approve the tourism budget with the additional 1.1 for Section 1 for the lifeguards. And Owen seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, TDA budget amendments. Any questions, comments, concerns? I'll move for approval on that.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And event grants. Any questions, comments, concerns on those? I'll move for approval on those as well.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the TDA?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I'll open the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board, and we have a public hearing, public hearing and possible adoption of their budget for '23, '24.
As presented, Mr. Chairman, on May 30th, 2023, I just wanted to denote two items relative to the budget. First of all, there is currently assessed a 10.3 cent tax in the district, which has been relied upon to pay the debt service for the district, for the wastewater treatment plant. That is not sufficient to pay the debt service, and the district has been relying upon rates, revenue from rates to pay for the debt service. That needs to be corrected, and so it's recommended that the tax be increased by 1.2 cents to 11.5 cents to pay for the debt service. In addition, the base sewer rate is much lower than what is required for the district to meet its operational costs for the wastewater system. And so it is proposed that the base rate be increased from $7.95 to $13, with the expectation that over the next few fiscal years, that rate will continue to be increased until it's able to support itself.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? All right, move for approval. Oh, wait, we're in a public hearing, sorry. There's no one in the audience to speak to this. Would anyone like to step forward? Jason? Thank you. I'll close the comment on that and move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I will reconvene the regular meeting and move to go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-31811A5 to establish or instruct county staff concerning the position to be taken by the county in negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract for purchase of real property being used for any governmental purpose. The property consists of 225 acres on Westside Lane in Powell's Point, North Carolina, owned by Amy Wells and Ronald K. Bennett. Parcel number 011200000010000 pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with a county attorney and to preserve attorney-client privilege of the matter entitled Misty Young v. Kerr-Tuck County, and pursuant to GS 143318.11A3 to consult with a county attorney and preserve their attorney-client privilege, attorney-client privilege. And as a reminder, depending on what comes out of that closed session, we will be going back on air again after the closed session. So can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.